Orders number eighteen dash oh three. An order that's called for reference to authorize the South Carolina Department of Revenue to issue temporary permits in the county of Darlington to allow for the possession, sale, and consumption of alcohol, liquor by the drink to bond by nonprofit organizations and business establishments. Authorized to be licensed for consumption on premises sales which allow the sale of beer and wine at permitted all premises location without regard to the date or hours of sale. This is the second reading. Does anyone wish to speak on public hearing? Orders number eighteen dash oh three. If not, I declare a public hearing closed. We then call the order, indication and pledge of allegiance, Mr. Douglas.
Father God, I want to thank you, Lord. Last night rest and a crying and touching break of love this morning. Father, we just want to thank you, Lord, for starting from a new day and closing now right now. And we asking you today, oh Lord, to come in this building, thus each and every one that has attended there, oh Lord. And Father, we can ask the ones that did not attend for the blessing for them. And Father God, we asking you today, oh Lord, to go through hospitals, to homes where we seek them, oh Lord. Father, we know that you are the one and there is no other. We ask you to touch them, oh Lord, so that they can see the light of getting with them. And Father God, we asking you today, oh Lord, to go through foreign countries, touch our boys, men, and women, give them some foresight of seeing them coming home one day. And Father, we asking you today, the thing that's galloping through this making you believe, say, amen.
Amen. Quite completely. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Connie Woodham. My husband is Wayne Woodham. We live on Syracuse Street and have property on the Moore Highway and Syracuse Street. We are here to seek solution to our situation and seek your support on the code. I think it's twenty-two seventy-six through seventy-eight. Seeking to stop receiving fines we cannot afford. We need more time to resolve this issue and have stressed this numerous times to the Code of Enforcement Office. We can't afford offense at this time. They are aware of the reason we are waiting but continue with fines that put stress on us. The time limit put on us is not reasonable, and I can't understand why Darlington County won't work with us. There are other properties that have cars on Main Street, South Main, just a place out there a little like Hugo Land. We have taken cars to the shredding to show we are trying. We struggle as most do to make a living. And senior citizens, this is our means of additional income. Wayne's struggles has been multiplied by current health issues. He does not need additional stress. I have a letter from his doctor due to that effect. We are law abiding citizens and we're told to seek your help in this matter. We are still talking with car crushing firms at the price they are now. We would be losing money. The firm that we wanted to go with was done to the Code of Enforcement. It did not go as planned. He could not pay as much as before. And because Wayne did not sign a contract, a few days later, we received a fine of three hundred dollars, now total of four hundred. We are not able to lose that kind of money. We are waiting for steel prices to go up, and they are. As soon as this price goes up, where we can make money and not lose, we're going to get rid of the junk cars. Please give us that time. Thank you for listening, my God bless you.
Thank you. For full text, stand up again.
Good evening. My name is Anna DeWitt, and I am again here tonight representing Darlington Rescue Squad. After receiving a letter from the Darlington County Administrator informing us that the county EMS service is distancing itself from the squads, I feel it is imperative that I remind each of you what our squad does to assist the citizens of this county, especially with budget sessions and workshops right around the corner. Last year, Darlington County provided financial assistance to the Darlington Rescue Squad in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. Last year, Darlington Rescue's insurance premiums alone were eleven thousand dollars. We also have mortgage payments, medical supply costs, vehicle repairs, and utility bills to pay, to name a few. Darlington Rescue does bill the patients insurance, however, we do not participate in an aggressive bill collecting service. We rely on citizens' donations and yearly assistance from the county to maintain our ambulance service. So what do you get in return for your contribution? You get an extra staffed ambulance without the added cost of salaries, insurance, and retirement payments. Since January the first, two thousand and eighteen, we have gotten fifty-three citizens of Darlington County transported to an ER that the county service was unable to respond to due to an increased call volume. Last month alone, you had a Darlington Rescue Squad ambulance staffed with a paramedic that responded to a call paged out as a Code Blue CPR in progress. You also had a Darlington Rescue Squad unit, again staffed with a paramedic, that responded to a call paged out as a burn patient. Only last weekend, Darlington Rescue responded to a call paged out as an uncautious patient, CPR in progress, per law enforcement. The nearest Darlington County EMS unit was passing Florence-Darlington Tech. Darlington Rescue not only responds to its ambulances, but we also provide advanced life support backup for Darlington County EMS units that are not staffed with a paramedic. So as you can see, Darlington Rescue is a necessary component of the emergency medical system of Darlington County. We are an avenue for you to increase your ambulances and decrease your response times at a very minimal cost. As each of you work on the budget for the upcoming year, please continue funding for our local rescue squads. Please keep in mind those fifty-three citizens, keep in mind the ever increasing call volume, and ask yourself how you would feel if it was your family member waiting on an ambulance when there was none available. Darlington County EMS is unique in that they have volunteers who want to help and who want to volunteer their time to this county. Please let them continue by continuing our funding. Thank you.
All right. We move on to consent agenda. The...
Move the approval of consent agenda items six, A, B, and C.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Approval of minutes, minutes of work sessions February nineteenth, twenty eighteen. Need a motion?
No motion.
In second, you second your opinion. Okay. Anyone wish to speak? Not? Need the motion for the, um...
We need a motion.
Okay. All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Minutes of public hearing and regular meeting marks of fifth, twenty eighteen.
Move for approval.
In second. All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, in lieu of information that is coming up, I'd like to move that we amend the agenda to bring forward executive session for receipt of legal advice for opinion ordinance.
Second motion. All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, this time I move that we go into executive session with members of council, our attorney, our county administrator.
And attorney from Hayward Central and Boyd, representing us on the matter, and economic development director.
All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Attorney.
If I could read ordinances, eight A and eight B, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, these are under ordinances. Number eight A is actually ordinance number seventeen dash seventeen, authorizing pursuant title twelve, chapter forty-four, Code of Law. State of South Carolina nineteen seventy-six has amended the execution and delivery of fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement by and between Darlington County, South Carolina, and certain companies as sponsor and sponsor affiliate prospectively identified collectively for the time being as project dates to provide for fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes incentives and certain special source revenue credits and other related matters. This is third reading, is located on page fifty-two of our booklet. I move the approval.
Second.
Anyone wish to speak? All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, eight B, ordinance seventeen dash eighteen, to amend the existing agreement governing the Darlington-Florence industrial park by and between Darlington County, South Carolina, and Florence County, South Carolina, to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain properties now or to be hereafter owned and/or operated by a company identified for the time being as project dates located in Darlington County, South Carolina, and authorizing other related matters. This is third reading, is found on page eighty-five, and I move to carry this over to our next meeting.
All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Eight C, ordinance number eighteen dash zero one, an ordinance to amend Darlington County Code of Ordinances, chapter fifty, solid waste, section fifty, dash one, littering by revising subsection D penalties to adopt the state's penalties for dumping litter on public and private property as outlined in section sixteen dash eleven dash seven hundred of the nineteen seventy-six Code of Law for South Carolina as amended. Third reading, page ninety-nine. I move to approve that.
Second. Any discussion? All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it.
Eight D, ordinance number eighteen dash zero two, an ordinance to amend ordinance number seventeen dash oh two, Darlington County Fiscal Year seventeen eighteen budget ordinance for supplemental appropriation to the library fund to receive and expand lottery funds for Darlington County library system and establish the effective date of this forfeiture. Third reading, found on page one-ten, salute for...
In second.
Second. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, I wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly support this. What I really want to say for a few minutes is how pleased I am with the library system and its present configuration. Uh, what they're doing in the four libraries is amazing. Uh, they have moved from a, I'm gonna call it an old fashioned term, book-based library to still having books. In fact, my wife dropped off about thirty a few weeks ago, uh, but to an electronic library. And that, the ability of that library now is to allow students and individuals to come in and do research, uh, much like we used to do in college libraries. Uh, and, and so students can work on their term papers online if they don't have that facility at home. And the most interesting thing about Mr. Efling is, uh, I had the pleasure of attending the Comic-Con out at, uh, at the SMIT building last September. And for you young, older, younger folks, Comic-Con is where people dress up as characters, maybe Batman, Superman, Wonder Woman, whatever. And they have, these are young people who are just having a good time. They're not drinking liquor, they're not smoking cigarettes in the building, and not doing other things we don't want them to do. They're out there literally having a good time. I got to go because I was just really interested in it. Obviously, I was probably the oldest person there, but that was all right, I don't lie. Um, but guess who was there? Mr. Efling, representing our county library, making sure that those people knew that they were welcome there, they had access there, and they had access to the facilities and the, all the things inside. So, uh, I appreciate you letting me say, really, I'm supporting this, but I wanted everybody to know how great a library system we have under Mr. Efling. Thank you, sir.
Well, I second that. Mr. Chairman, thank you for seeing us in one of the...
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Eight D, orders number eight, one dash oh three, an order that's called for reference to authorize the South Carolina Department of Revenue to issue temporary permits in the county of Darlington to allow for the possession, sale, and consumption of alcohol, liquor by the drink to bond by nonprofit organizations and businesses to be licensed for consumption on premises sales to allow the sale of beer and wine at permitted all premises location without regard to the date of hours of sales. Second reading.
I move the approval.
Any discussion? All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it.
Item eight F, ordinance number eighteen dash zero four, an ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary county purposes for the Darlington County for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, to provide for the expenditures thereof and to provide for revenues for the payment thereof as amended. First reading, no action taken.
Eight G, orders number eighteen dash five, an order to designate an agent in the county for alcohol and drug abuse, planning for programs to make appropriations pursuant to section six, twenty-seven, dash forty B, and twelve, dash thirty-three, two-quarter, five B, and seek of the nineteen seventy-six Code of Law of the South Carolina as amended for Darlington County for the fiscal year beginning July the first, two thousand and eighteen, and ending June the third, two thousand and nineteen. First reading, no action taken.
Resolutions. Resolution number six eighty-eight, inducing, resolution inducing and identifying proposed investment fund code, name of project dates, and other matters related to thereto, page one thirty-five. Need a motion?
So moving.
Second.
Any discussion? All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Need reports on other items of purpose to board commissions and committees. Carryover, remind, the flowers, carryover.
Carryover.
The committee is appointed to the co-house construction advisory committee physically disabled represent of chairman. Anybody knows, anybody would like to serve, let me know right now. Carryover.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, does that, when does that go, when will that go into effect? And would that be, um, is there a timeline on the handicap appointee?
Do you know, Charles?
Just when the council reports.
The committee has not met, has it?
It has not met recently, no.
I might be...
Okay.
...
Eleven C, informant of FY eighteen nineteen accommodation tax advisory committee hospitality business page one fifty-three.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to recommend Ashley Flowers, just for recollection, this was the vacancy, uh, Mr. Kilgo spoke to someone last month, and they declined from my recollection, so we're asked to follow up on this. Ashley is the manager of Mr. Bee's Restaurant, so he is in the hospitality industry. Uh, and lives in the Hartsfield area.
Sebastian.
Yes. And Ashley has served the city accommodation tax, so he is familiar with...
Ashley Flowers. Thank you. May I have a report of the question?
Yes.
Second. Any discussion? All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Request to transfer surplus vehicle...
Mr. Chairman, I need to advise you since this was confirmed after this was put on here, you also have another vacancy on the accommodations tax committee. Um, the seat that Mr. McFarland was occupying, he has accepted Hartsfield's offer. So, accepting that seat, he automatically resigned from the cap, the accommodations tax. So that is an open seat. They begin their work next week. In the next week, Janet?
What's his, what's his seat title?
He's a, he's a citizen-at-large, so...
Citizen-at-large.
Anybody you want to... It's not required to be filled, but it wants to pass you by the opportunity, not even...
Right, I understand. Um... I mean, I'm not fair to Congress to put somebody's name up until I'm told.
But they can continue to be with that vacancy.
They've met with vacancies before, right? Just wanted to make sure you guys were...
Well, uh, so we've talked in the past about Mr. Efling. Would you be serving in that citizen-at-large capacity as far as the...
I wouldn't mind at all.
Okay. You got it.
In the place of Mr. McFarland's resignation, uh, I move that anyone Efling's being appointed in that slot.
Second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All the papers say aye. All opposed? Ayes have it, Mr. Efling.
Oh, you didn't vote.
All right. Eleven D, request to transfer surplus vehicle two thousand and eight Ford Explorer to Celester's office.
Move to carryover.
In second.
Uh, I'll second, Mr., is there a reason, Mr. Kilgo?
Yeah, I'm gonna show y'all some stuff later on, why.
Out of, what, out of, I second out of respect, Mr. Kilgo.
Like the fact that we've only had four terms of court in Darlington County in the first six months of the year, when we used to have nine terms of court for general session. Celester now is now only having four weeks. We can't get cases tried in Darlington County, that's why.
All right, so we got carried over. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Eleven E, corporate service agreement with Darlington County and U.S. Department of Agricultural, Animal, and Plant Health Inspection Service, Wildlife Service, W thirty-five thousand dollars, this proposed beaver program.
Uh, move for approval.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, how, um, tell me what's the, uh, what we all got program? What section of Darlington, is it all over the county, or just tell me just a little, a little summary on the back?
Is anyone who calls or requests help with beaver problems? So it doesn't matter where it's at. Yeah, beaver removal and trapping relocation, they do.
But this, this is a pass-through.
This is a pass-through from us straight to, um, wild, USDA wildlife. You really can't do without this program, and they, this first time it's going up in how many years have we been in the country?
Been going on.
How many, how long since it went up again? This is first time.
Oh, yeah, no, this is the first time.
This first increase requires at least four or five years.
I just had a question, thank you.
All the papers say aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Eleven F, sole source purchase of fifteen sets of bulk of gear to Darlington County Fire District. Page one seventy-seven. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion. Give the...
In second.
Second.
Any discussion? All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Parts from Northern League Investment Fund for repair, restoration, defenses at Ruby Road, baseball appeals, fifteen thousand dollars. Need a motion?
Move for approval.
In second.
Second. This is come out of hospitality?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Informant of three individuals to the capital project sales tax commission.
Before you do that, um, I'm gonna ask the city of Darlington's appointee, if you would indulge me, Mr. Ronnie Ward, to come up. He and the city of Hartsfield's appointees have agreed upon their third appointee, and he was just gonna make that announcement to y'all before y'all look forward. Make sure there's no conflict in names, double appointee.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. McFarland and I talked, and, um, we also talked with a couple of council members in Lamar and Society Hill area, and he and I agreed, um, to select Fran Knotts to serve, um, on that committee. She is from Lamar here. So that's our choice.
Fran Knotts.
Fran Knotts.
Oh, it has to be two, but they're not...
And so just so that in case somebody was nominating the same individual, they've already appointed her as their third appointee.
All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it.
No, I'm good.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
For one of the positions, I nominate Don, Danny Johnson, who is owner, primary owner of North Industrial. Um, he lives north of Hartsfield.
Second. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. Eight C, ordinance number eighteen dash zero one, an ordinance to amend Darlington County Code of Ordinances, chapter fifty, solid waste, section fifty, dash one, littering by revising subsection D penalties to adopt the state's penalties for dumping litter on public and private property as outlined in section sixteen dash eleven, dash seven hundred of the nineteen seventy-six Code of Law for South Carolina as amended. Third reading, page ninety-nine. I move to approve that. Second. Any discussion? All the papers say aye. All opposed, ayes have it.
You got to do all your nominations here first so you can vote your next committee. You have to put all your nominations before...
You got one?
I have one, please, Mr. Chairman. I nominate Reverend Robbie Short, pastor, almost is relocated here in Darlington, Lawrence, South Carolina area.
That's your motion?
I'd also like to nominate Travis Walters. Travis is, uh, just in Kellytown area, and is a retired, retired...
I nominate Carol Bishop.
Three. Who's four now?
That's four.
Four. That's four.
What did you mention? Carol.
Miss... No, I don't.
All right, we've got four. Uh, the other, the three.
I have a question about Carol Bishop. Mr. Douglas has nominated, I don't think he heard me. Where is she from? Carol Bishop.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, so we need to vote on, all second, right?
So we have to pick three?
You have to pick three out of the, out of the four.
And if three, and if the three highest vote gets her, go, and if there's a tie, then you have a runoff between the, is that?
I think the, you call it each name individually, you'll vote on each one of them, we'll tabulate votes for each one of them, three highest.
You only vote, you can only vote for three.
You can only vote for three, and...
Okay.
We'll tabulate, there's a tie, you'll run off those two.
We need to nominate all those one time and then vote on...
Well, let's just start at the end and work down, unless you got a different one, do this, and you pick your three, and these three, and we'll, we'll put number of votes every seat.
All right, I vote for Johnson, Short, and Walters.
Okay. Ms. Jones.
Short, Walters, Jones, is that?
I think that's...
Johnson.
Johnson, excuse me.
Okay.
Danny Johnson, Reverend Short, Travis Walters. Uh, Carol Bishop, Danny Johnson, and Walters.
Johnson, Short, Bishop.
Short and Bishop.
So you just voted two?
Two. It wasn't Bishop.
Short and Bishop.
Mr. Hudson, have you voted?
No. Danny Johnson, Reverend Short, Travis Walters.
Let the three of us compare and make sure we all agree. Of course, whatever you need.
Mr. Hudson, have you voted?
No. Reverend Johnson, Reverend Short.
Who's the other one?
Travis. Travis Walters.
The three of us compare to make sure we all agree. You got the same name, you might have a different person's name. First results are Johnson with six votes, Short with six votes, and Walters with five votes.
Okay, that's the three.
And that's your results.
Nevermind. All in favor?
Your, your three elected was Johnson with six votes, Short with six votes, Walters with five vote, five votes, and Miss Bishop had the remaining three votes.
Right. Just make the vote, all in. Done.
They're done.
That's it. Alright, eleven I, greater for Darlington Chamber of Commerce, with Office of County Funds for Freedom Fest, twenty thousand dollars. Any motion?
Any motion to give, Chamber of Commerce, twenty thousand?
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, um, we did this with them, was it last year or the year before?
Last year.
And it got washed out, they didn't do anything about protecting the firework cause. Is anything in their statement this time that they've got insurance in case it gets washed out?
No, and I don't believe the request specifically says this time that it's for the fireworks, so the previous two years, I believe they asked you, I know last year they asked for fifteen thousand off of fireworks. Um, I believe that's the way it was the previous year, but I believe this year is just generically for the event. So it doesn't say they're specifically asking for that before the fireworks. But no, we have required nothing of them to ensure or anything like that.
Then they say what it's gonna be for, isn't it?
Just for their operation this year, just an open request for twenty thousand dollars support, Freedom Fest.
Before we'd be giving them fifteen in our own.
Yes, last two years fifteen thousand.
I move amended fifteen thousand.
So I have a question, Mr. Chairman, so is there any type of agenda, or so we don't know what's expected to show up, you know?
I never come, that would come from Chamber, that's what I'm asking you.
I'll second.
So you're gonna, discussions? It's gonna be fifteen thousand dollars, Chamber. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
I have staying due to my relationship with Ray Track.
That's one, two, three, four, Danny. Yeah, they used it. It rang out. Yeah, just going to be ten pounds.
No, I was just saying, the fireworks was, that wasn't the only, um, event that they used the money for.
Yeah, it was last year.
It was?
This year, they, I guess, being, they want to, they want to.
Yeah, but is that clarified, that they're not going, that that's gonna be general use of money this year?
Their request this time did not specify for the fireworks, it was just generally overall for operation of Freedom Fest.
Is that specifically stated?
It's not specifically stated, it's request for just the operation of the Freedom Fest. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't specifically ask to use this money for something specific within the Freedom Fest.
Like they've done in the past.
Right, for the, last year they asked for it for fireworks, I remember him specifically asking to support the fireworks, well, previous year I wasn't here, but I was told to support the fireworks.
Yes, it was.
But it, it just requests this time for twenty thousand dollars to go towards reduction of Freedom Fest. And it's have a specific item that they're funding within Freedom Fest.
Okay, so those your votes was?
Yes.
Yep, Ms. Penny?
I vote for the fifteen thousand, and that was under motion, right?
That was a motion to amend, to, now, primary motion.
Yeah, now we got to get back and vote, vote.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Fifteen, amended it to fifteen, and then they just approved the fifteen.
Eleven J, agreement with Michael Baker International, providing detailed summary of scope of work for revision to the program for the Darlington County Courthouse Administration Building, fifty-two thousand, two seventy-two.
Move the carryover.
Is the second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, a's having. Eleven to end, but there's some reason to carry over.
This committee, that we do, the point really needs to do their work first.
Yeah, agreement with Michael Baker International for, to build a report for proposed renovation of the existing Darlington County Courthouse Administration Building, two thousand, seven thirty-six.
Move the carryover.
Is the second?
Second. I have a question about the carryover from the benefit of committee, is this information that they'll need to know?
You asking me? This is, these two were a result of the request of the work session for additional study structures on what could be done to the current courthouse, what program changes could be made, and that, I reckon it's debatable as to whether that's the purpose of the CPST committee, to evaluate the current structure.
Well, I think what this was generated by Mr. Coker's request.
But y'all voted to have me grab these things, so.
Yes, I said that.
But if you don't need them right now, you don't need them right now. Just, it'll take approximately a month, from what I understand, for them to deliver these, once they're told that we want them to deliver these.
I'd rather Mr. Coker be here to explain.
Alright, gotcha. Move, yeah, and move the carryover, both of them, yeah.
The personal carryover, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, a's having. Minister Gregor, vote aye.
The only thing I have for you that wasn't covered in some of these items was that Ms. Ziegler from the city of Hartsville did extend an invitation, y'all, I want to make sure I get the right date, just at five o'clock today. She is having the Ethics Committee Director, on April the twenty-fifth at ten-thirty, if any of y'all are interested, as a lead official, to attend the meeting, April twenty-fifth at ten-thirty. To come and explain and offer an opportunity for their council to hear from the Ethics Director on the new ethics law. We had a couple phone call and open sessions for y'all to attend, when they made those changes a little over a year ago, but since she extended the invitation, I wanted to make sure, I'll put it before y'all in case you're interested.
What day is that?
April the twenty-fifth at ten-thirty. It does not have where, but I can certainly, Ms. Jeanette will confirm where this is gonna be and give the information to you.
April the twenty-fifth?
Yes, ma'am.
So ten-thirty?
Ten-thirty a.m. We'll confirm where she's gonna do it, and make sure that information is out.
Alright, members of council. Ms. Nevison? Douglas?
Uh, I got a couple of quick things. One, chief, the old bunker gear, what do we do with it, is there a, do we recycle it, do we use it for training, what?
Yes, sir, a lot of times what we do is, if it's in good enough shape, we recycle it to newer members, and if not, we put our junior members in it because they'll never be put into a live fire situation.
But that gets them used to moving with it, operating with it, so that they just practice within that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's good to know. The other, the other thing I have a comment is, since we're starting the process of the local option sales tax, I have an opinion on it, but I am going to trust, when this process works out, in the wisdom of the Darlington County voter, as far as which way they want to go with it, so my comment from here on, if anyone asks me if I'm for the local option sales tax, is no comment, whatever the citizens decide. I will willingly live with. Uh, the other is that there have been all these stories out there that there's a thirty-seven million dollar courthouse, and all, all I can say is that I will not vote for a thirty-seven million dollar courthouse for, for Darlington County, regardless of the local option sales tax, how we fund it. Uh, and the other side, and the other part of that is, there are lots and lots of options, as far as how we're going to address the needs of courthouse administration, and until we get the funding source and the options, what they are and what is best, I really don't have any comments. And so if you say what Lee says, so it's, that is not true, I'm waiting, just like you, for more information as far as how we can handle, um, the issue of lack of space and safety.
So you, 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 Mr. Chairman, I have a question, with flowers, you, you said courthouse administration, or you mean, uh, because there's, I'm confused, courthouse administration means what?
All the problems that we have with the courthouse, as far as where the court is located.
Oh, no, let's see.
The administration offices, the, where there's the probate, the treasurer, all of those issues that we have in the existing courthouse, I do not know what the answer is as far as what constructs.
No, excuse me, I apologize, but when you say courthouse administration, I was thinking what, in legal terms, with regard to the request that, requirements that the state had made with regard to maintaining the bounds and what happened, that's something different.
No, I was saying courthouse and administration.
Okay.
Okay, great. Start by saying thanks to Mayor Ward and those others who've accepted the challenge to be on this committee. Like many things that we go through, they start out with somewhat of a highly emotional state, and then draw down to, uh, what our goal is, a sensible conclusion. I do think there's a couple of things that I have to keep in mind, and I echo what Mr. Flowers said, is I think the council has expressed their appetite for the time of the sales tax, be four years or less, uh, where that dollar amount comes through, we're certainly not at the point to make a decision. I do think it's also, the other thing to take into consideration, what it is a palatable question on the referendum, so the two goals that we had to come up with, number one, what's gonna meet the expectation of the council, and then also what would be the expectation of the voters, so, uh, I do appreciate your willingness to take the time, and the other committee members, I look forward to hearing back, and then also how this will progress from now until November. I think it's critical that we do what's in the best interest of the county, and I appreciate your, your willingness to help us get to that point.
I do appreciate everyone that's on the committee commission, and I'm sure we'll get started on that, with some positive results, positive outcomes, of course, that's gonna be the biggest thing for the next ten, maybe fifteen years here in Darlington County. And I would like to be a part of it positively, and I'm sure we can get to that point, and I appreciate everyone's help in that. However, I want to call council's attention to the consent agenda in reference to the flyer on poverty that I attended that convention in December, and I just wanted you all to know that I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel, that's something that the National Association of Accountants are working on, and I'm specifically dealing with Darlington County. So I will be working with the school district, Mr. Kilgo, on that, and we got a program lined out for the summer. Uh, also, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't see Mr. Lee Andrews, but we had a good, uh, boxing match on March twenty-fourth over in the A.W. Stanley Gym, and it really was attended very good. Uh, we had young men from Florida, someone came from Philadelphia, and I have just a list of young men that was there, and it was great. Had police protection, I mean, it was something that you never thought Darlington would have. Uh, the news media got there a little late, but it was well worth it. And I'm so sorry, because I'm always after him about good sports and recreation, and the time I talk about it, he's not here. And I just thank everybody for working with us, um, I enjoy serving and working with people, you know, and that's what it should be, I thank everybody that's aimed here on the council, and I certainly enjoy working with you all, and I look forward to more and better things. Mr. Kilgo?
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Alright.
Ms. Thomas and I have the great pleasure of representing the citizens of the city of Darlington in its outlying areas, and we consider that a, a privilege to be able to do that, and we want to continue to do that. Uh, but we also both realize that not only, uh, are we single member district members from one little area, we also represent every citizen of Darlington County, just like every other person that sits on this council. And so then when we look at things, when you look, look at them, uh, as a countywide issue, even if it just affects one area, um, and so, um, when we talk about courthouses and administration buildings and things, um, it, it, they, they lie in the city of Darlington, because that's what's been under state statute for a long time. And we're operating out of a building that's fifty-something years old, uh, that probably was designated to last probably about thirty, and actually, had, they had to start within eight years of building another place to move people out of that building. Um, it was not functional, uh, almost within eight years, eight to ten years of, of its existence, establishment. Uh, I look forward to seeing what the committee that's been established comes up with, and recommendations as far as your judicial center, or whatever, I'm leaving it to them to do. I appreciate the six members who volunteered their time and efforts, uh, for that. Uh, as Mr. Brown said, we will see what they come up with, as Mr. Flowers says, he's not doing anything till he sees what they come up with, and I'm not gonna do anything either, this is the last comments I'm gonna make on the subject. I trust those six people to do what they thinks best for Darlington County. Uh, that's why we sit here, and that's why we will continue to sit here, if we ever become so petty, that the only thing we care about is our own particular district, then we ought to resign with that, thank you.
Thank you. Just to remind everyone, Lamar has his X-Special Gemma Reed this weekend, the parade starts at eleven. I too appreciate Ronnie and the staff that he's put together, and, uh, some kind of solutions for, thank everyone for coming, and, uh, your comments was not, was taken, and we'll go from there. Appreciate everybody, have a good night.
Move to adjourn.